I'll call this regular council meeting of the Village of Graham and Anne to order at 7:34 PM. For prayer this evening, we have Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons.
Father, we thank you for this opportunity to get together tonight. We pray that you give us wisdom with the issues that we'd be dealing with. Just thank you and praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. I have a few things for opening remarks. I wanted to actually start off with a little bit of good news that we received this morning. Humphrey's Funeral Home has, as of May 1st, signed a lease with Elle's Funeral Home to use some of their facilities. So they have staff here on the island. They will be able to meet with families to set up arrangements and that sort of thing. Family members will be able to do that here, but the remains will still have to go off island and then come back. But it does cut down on some of that travel for people, so I think that's really good news. We welcome them to the community and they have decided to keep the name at the funeral home. It's going to be the Philip Ells Junior Memorial Funeral Center. So I thought that was a very nice touch for the community. I wanted to, this evening, just talk about a couple of meetings that we've had lately that don't always make our agenda, but some of the things that we're working on just so that people are aware that there are things going on in the background. We had a meeting a few weeks ago with Synergy, who is an economic development group based in Eastern Charlotte. They've done a lot of good work on the mainland and they'd like to include us in some of their activities. So we've agreed to be on their website and we hopefully will be able to align ourselves a little bit more with them going forward, but I think it's a good collaboration that we have the potential to be part of. I had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago to participate in the Swallow Tale-thon. So that's a cause that's near and dear to all of our hearts and it was great to see them raise about 55,000 at the telethon that weekend, which is an amazing amount. So that puts them right around 215,000 towards their goal of repairs out at the lighthouse. So it's a good start. I think that the shingle siding, I can't say those words together, is on site and I think they're ready. They could do the tower this year anyway and hopefully the funds will continue to come in to do the keeper's house as well. At the last meeting, the RCMP was a very hot topic of conversation and we've continued to have meetings subsequent to that, both with our local detachment here and at a regional level. At the regional meeting, I think one of the things that struck me was how universal the frustration was across communities about needing boots on the front lines. And hopefully, from a regional perspective, there's some pressure coming there. Hopefully, the new officers that the funding has been announced for by the province will help. And I know in talking to our local detachment, since our last meeting, they have seen an uptick in people who are reporting thefts and that sort of thing, which is the first step. So I think everybody has a role. I think we all recognize that and I think it was said at the last meeting and it's been said since, this is just one part of a bigger problem that we're all dealing with. So we need to talk about all aspects of that, but that is at least a good start on some things. Lastly, sort of lastly, there's a couple of big events since our last meeting that we didn't have last week. I think we have to mention the fire that was up in Northhead last Monday. I know in speaking to members of the fire department that they were very grateful for the community support that we had that day. There were people that came out with food and water and just showed up. There were people that showed up that were on the ground to help with moving hoses or anything like that that needed to be done. So they were very happy with the community outreach that day and I think it's also worth noting that as they were moving back and forth with the trucks to get water, both to the reservoir in Northhead and then down to Castalia, people were very quick to stay out of the way. And a lot of times, we talk about people not getting out of the way of emergency vehicles, so I think it's important to note when people are on the ball and cooperating. So thanks to everybody who was in the area that day for doing what needed to be done. And the last thing I was going to add under opening remarks, but I think I'd like to add it to the agenda later on as an update on MB Power and the power outage this weekend. So maybe when we get to additions to the agenda, we can talk about adding that there, if that's okay. So I apologize for being long-winded, but I felt like we'd done a lot over the last month and sometimes it's good to talk about some of those things. So with that being said, we're up to number four, disclosure of conflict of interest.
I'd declare conflict on 19-2 in closed session.
Anyone else? The next up is adoption of the minutes from our regular council meeting of April 3rd. I would note one change just under the calling to order. It was Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons that called the meeting to order. You heard the motion from Counselor Greenlaw. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Boyd. Any question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Next thing on the agenda is additions to the agenda. I would like to add, as I said, under new business, which would be 14-9, MB Power. Update. I also have a note that we have an application for a donation, which would also fall under new business. It's from the Car Club, I believe.
Yes.
And I noticed our MLA is here and I wondered about adding her under special delegations or speakers if she wanted to say a few words under number 11, if that's okay. Does anybody have anything else? Would anybody like to move to add those things?
I'd make a motion to add them to the agenda.
You heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Item number seven is the RCMP. That was well timed! Were you waiting out in the hall? I would, just before Corporal Stewart starts, I do think it's worth noting that a lot of other communities don't have the RCMP come to participate in their regular meetings. So we do appreciate you coming to talk to us every month and it doesn't go unnoticed that you're very faithful to show up and if it's not you, it's a member of your staff, so.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Counselors. I'm glad to be able to make it just in time here. Wasn't sure if I might fall in later in the meeting, but that's okay. We'll jump right in here. So I looked quickly at our numbers for the last month, month of April, and I looked back to 2022. We had 47 files that we were responding to last year. Last month, April of this year, was 60 files, so it was, we did see an increase there. We did feel a bit busier as well this last month and going into this month as well. Of those 60 files, we did have 11 of those files with charges laid. One was a breach of conditions, one was a theft, one for break and enter, and the rest were traffic-related, including one impaired driver that was arrested. Breaking down the 60 files into kind of what we were dealing with, eight of them were break and enter files. And I did break that down a little bit more just from what we were kind of talking about the last meeting to kind of just show, I guess, where some of those files are. One is unfounded, so that means that we were able to prove that it didn't happen. We can't, if it's a matter of that we're not sure or we don't have enough evidence, we can't score it as unfounded. It would be insufficient evidence. We did have one as unfounded, so we were able to prove that that didn't actually happen. One is still open under investigation. One, like I said, the charges were laid and one was, there were charges applicable, but the victim declined to proceed with that one. And then the rest were insufficient evidence for us to proceed any further. We also responded to three mental health files, six mischief, 14 traffic-related, and six reports of theft. At the last meeting, there was brought up a question about the scan program and I wasn't really too aware of where that was standing, so I did some looking into it and actually got to talk to one of the local, I believe is an investigator for scan. They are very much still active. They had some success in St. Stephen last year, I believe it was. And from what he had to say, he was very enthusiastic about coming over to help and, but he needs a referral from an actual community member, not myself. It can't be a referral from the police. Needs to be from the community because that's what they stand for. That's what their mandate is, is safer communities. And so it takes somebody calling in a referral about one of their neighbors or somebody else in the community that they're aware of and just kind of wrote down a bit about what their mandate is, is to improve community safety by shutting down properties that are regularly used for illegal activities. That is, this program is 100% confidential. If somebody calls in the 1-877 number to make a report, their name is never passed on to anybody. It can't even be passed on to the local police. It's not passed on through the court system. If it does, if the matter goes to court, their name is never brought up. It's 100% confidential. You can find their information on the government in New Brunswick website. I just, tonight, I just typed in GNB scan and I think it was the first thing that popped up there. So you can find their information on the website. I wasn't sure if the village had posted anything about that or not, but, and I do have the phone number that I can give out tonight as well to call anything in. And there is an email address listed on the website as well. I'm not sure if that's more just if people have questions about the program or if it's another way that you can report. I'm not sure. The investigator that I spoke with was also enthusiastic about coming over or meeting with council or doing some kind of a community presentation or information session as well. So that's something we're just kind of still looking into and might be a possibility for the future. As well, we talked more about the Neighborhood Watch last week and I put out a plea for people who are interested in getting involved in something like that. And last summer, I had mentioned it and we didn't have anybody come forward. This time, we have, I believe, eight people who are interested in being part of that program. And so I am still waiting to hear back from our community programs officer. She'd be the one who would come over and kind of set that program up and give out some information and things like that. So I'm waiting to find out if she knows how many people she would need to run a program successfully here and so whether or not eight is enough. Even if that's not the case, maybe she can come over and, just like Scan, put on a bit of a presentation, talk to people who might be interested or are on the fence and we might be able to get something going there. Something else that we're getting that community programs officer to get involved in is an upcoming bike rodeo for next month that's in the works. Kim Schufelt had reached out to us about getting involved with that or participating and helping out. So Constable Mark Wright, the officer who was with me last week, he's kind of gonna work on setting some things up on our end along with our community programs officer. She's planning on coming over to the island to be part of that. She's got some things that she can bring over. She already sent over some prizes and things like that that we can give out for the bike rodeo. So that's looking very promising, a nice community event that we can get involved in and hopefully we can get some other local people involved in that as well. That's all that I had prepared tonight, so if anybody has any questions or comments?
That was a lot. Thank you. Any questions or comments? You could tell the counselors of a certain age when you said eight is enough because some people laughed and some people didn't. And I will apologize. I think you sent me some information on Scan and I did not forward it as me to post on the Facebook site, so I will do that after the meeting. So my apologies for that, but we will get that up on our Facebook page.
No problem, yeah.
All right. Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna excuse myself, so have a good evening.
That was well timed, I have to tell you. All right. Moving on to item 9-1, Office Express proposal. CAO Rayner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In your package, you have the information and the quote from Office Express. This was part of the process when we were looking at having our little bit of an overhaul in the council room. This was kind of the second phase. First phase was looking at multimedia basically first and then furniture second. So this was the price from them to supply the affordable tables or the modular tables. That way there, we could set them up in a fashion much like they are right now, but for smaller committee meetings or for virtual meetings, you could have a smaller footprint to use them for, so we'll not have such a large room. The rest of them could be stacked up along the wall. Anyway, the price from them, as you can see, is around 15,000 plus tax, which seems a bit high for what we were thinking or what I was thinking. I do know with the cameras and the multimedia portion of it, that itself was also around the 16,000, 18,000 range. Speaking of bill tonight, I think the price of the cameras have come down a little bit because the manufacturer's got a new model out, so everything else is being reduced. But I did look online to see if there were some similar tables that we could price individually about buying. Price per table kind of fluctuated. They weren't too far off on their price. Most of their tables are around the $1,000, $1,200 range and we found quite a few online for like the 700, 800 range. So I guess at this point, it's just trying to figure out where to go from here with our council room makeover, if we want to proceed or not.
Questions or comments?
I just, I know the price seems high, but I think if you're getting tables that can be adjusted to be used in so many different ways, it might be worth the effort to do it. And I mean, if you can find something cheaper maybe, but sometimes cheaper is not always better. But I know we want these tables to do a number of things. So like if, you know, you have different events that are going on in here too. It's not just council that's in here, so it's just not two cents worth.
Thank you, Counselor Toll. Counselor Turner?
Yeah, I sort of echo Counselor Toll. I think sometimes too, if we have something that's more of a gathering-type nature, it's hard to do it with these huge pieces of furniture and these ones could be put out of the way. So it's not only that it's adaptable for different-sized groups, but it can actually be sort of, you know, put aside, which I think is a big plus. And with how few meeting rooms are available on the island, I think it kind of behooves us to make something that works for more groups of people.
Anyone else?
So I guess, question is, where do we draw the funds from?
Do you want to ask Finance and Property to have a look at it? Or do we want to make a decision tonight and try to cash manage it for the year? And do we want to talk about doing the audiovisual part as well as the tables? Do it all together in one package or one or the other, both? I guess is the question. Counselor Green?
There's been some talk of Finance and Properties doing a recap of where we are, where we stand, what our priorities are, what's coming down the road. The two of these together would be over $30,000. And yes, we could always take it from the Capital Reserve Fund, but we've got a lot of things potentially coming at it. I think it would behoove us to complete that review of where we are and if there's money available, I'm in favor of doing this, if we can afford to do it.
So I hear, I think Finance and Property to have a look at it and maybe we can bring this back hopefully at the June meeting? Is that what I'm hearing? Counselor Turner, you guys okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So that's 9-1. 9-2 is City of St. John, the Boardwalk Lighthouse. CAO Rayner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So at the last meeting, we talked about the fact that the city would like to give us the lighthouse from Market Square. And we were tasked with trying to figure out how much it was going to cost to get it here. So staff reached out to one of the contacts that we were given and they come back with a price of about $7,200 plus tax to deliver it. Now Alyssa was speaking with the individual there and they said, "Don't tell this right up front," but she was gonna, so I'm gonna. They're willing to contribute $2,000 to help with the move. But having said that, once we get it here, I wonder if that's when the real cost is going to be incurred. Because we got to prepare a spot, you got to make a foundation, you got to run electrical to it, water if preferred, but certainly electrical.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Where do we plan on putting it?
Good question, but first thought was put it right here somewhere on the grounds of the community center to put the VIC in it.
That would lessen the need for running water or washroom facilities if it was here, wouldn't it? Because they could access here in the building.
Absolutely. But after watching the last council meeting, we did have an individual, a local, reach out and say, "If we weren't interested, that he may be." So. And it wasn't Kenny.
Is it big enough to actually run the VIC out of?
It is. I mean, it's no, it's larger than the office that they had last year.
And is it the lighthouse right in front of the Hilton?
Yeah.
Okay.
Counselor Toll?
I just wonder, was that place ever used for anything other than a decoration in St. John? Was there something in it at one time?
There was. It has doors and windows and stuff in it. It's got power to it.
Oh, okay.
Yep. And it's actually, I think, with some of the pictures that we've shown, it's got a fire hydrant attachment on it as well for water. So. Which is all making the expensive move part of it because you got to unhook all the water mains and all the electrical and stuff like that.
Counselor Layton?
Is there like an approximate weight on it? I've had some discussions with some people and they thought they might be able to put it right on the back of their boat, but how heavy does it weigh, I guess? Is there any way of, I mean, there's hooks on it to actually heist it down onto a boat, so there's no way to come up with like a weight?
Someone might be able to.
Because it might be just that easy to set it on the back of a fishing boat and bring it across. Possibility. But is it 12 by 12? I mean, take the top, I don't know, but.
So I guess the question is, for, we'll say 7,200 plus tax, maybe a little bit less, but we probably would spend a little bit less on the setup here. Is this something we're interested in?
So what kind of shape is it really in? Like, I mean, you know, we're putting shingles on Swallow Tail, so is this a job that might have to be done with this? Is this half decent shape or?
According to the individual we sent there to look at it, about shipping it, was surprised on how good a shape it was in. But I wonder before, if, sticking with Counselor Green's suggestion about, we're four months in now, about sitting down and looking at where we are and what we've got coming up before you make, again, another decision like this. But the trouble is, they needed to know. Mr. Frey, once it gets here, what's the cost going to be once it arrives?
So we could get it here and decide what we're going to do with it after, if we don't want to set it up for the summer. Or we can just say, "No, we don't want it," or we can get it and commit to it. But apparently, we need to know tonight. Counselor Turner?
If we get it here, would the other person, like, would they cover the transportation charges if they took it?
That's a good question. I can ask them.
I'll say this, it's, I think it's a nice thought. I think in a perfect world, it would be really cool to have a lighthouse sitting out there as our VIC. It'd be pretty neat. Do we want to go 10, 15, $20,000 into having a kitschy lighthouse in the? I guess, again, we can take it to Finance and Property and have a look again at our priorities. I mean, if the city wants to get rid of it last Thursday, then maybe they can chip it here on their dime, I guess, and we could look at it from there. But I think it's kind of a, "We'd like to have neat" thing versus need to have it.
Counselor Turner? Are you leaning forward or you? Anyone else? Counselor Green?
I'll echo some of what Dan said. I think it'd be neat to have it if we had a concrete plan of, you know, what we had, where it had to go and the VIC here. A lot of people still think it would be better closer to the ferry and I'm not sure if they aren't right on that. Do you drive to the middle of the community to get the visitor information or is it like the one in St. John's on the highway going in there? I don't think we have any property up there to put something on and to try to, you know, do it and do it right. I mean, if we were to get it, if we had a place to store it until we got our ducks lined up, but I'm not sure, even then, if it's something that is going to mesh with, you know, and work with us financially and logistically.
Okay, so I think I have the answer to this, but I'm going to phrase it this way. If there is support for accepting the lighthouse, I'd be looking for a motion. And hearing none, I'm going to move on to the 10-minute open session. Is that fair? Okay. So item number 10 is the 10-minute open session. And seeing no one coming up to the plate, we'll move on to item number 11, which is delegations and special speakers. And our MLA, Andrea Anderson-Masons, is here and she said she would say happy things, so. Welcome.
Conversation. I can't tell you how much I enjoyed that. That was great. So this evening, when I got on the ferry, the first face that I saw was Deputy Mayor Roger. And he said to me, "Oh, are you coming because you have something specific you, you know, something to say?" I said, "No, I really don't." But that being said, really what I do want to say echoes the sentiments of the mayor this evening. It seems like there is so much that has gone on, particularly with the island in the last little while, that I just felt like I needed to be here. So from my perspective, my own schedule, the last six weeks, I've been completely AWOL because we had two weeks of the legislature and then four weeks of being in the Committee of Estimates, which means from Tuesday to Friday of every week, I'm not even in. of being in the Committee of Estimates, which means from Tuesday to Friday of every week, I'm not even in Charlotte County at all. I'm actually in Fredericton. And so that has prevented me from being able to come and visit the island. And then tomorrow, after I leave the island, I'll head straight to Fredericton, and I'll be there till Friday. And that will be for two weeks. I'll get a little break, and then I'll get another two weeks, so I'm going to be missing again. So I hate that. I hate that disconnect that I feel when I can't physically be here, especially when I consider all the things that have happened. So just recently, on the mainland, we, we suffered a loss. There was the death of a, of a young girl, my daughter's age. And after it happened, I was speaking with the premier, and I said, "You just..." Before I took this job, I didn't realize how much things like that impact you. I think for many people, M.L.A.s, you know, we're, we're sort of the face of the provincial government, we're often the punching bag, but they, you might not realize how the feeling that we actually have to the communities that we represent. And when I think about all the things that have happened on the island as of recently, I think about the calls that I've received in relation to the RCMP, about people's feelings of safety and security, about drug issues. I think about the, the loss with Special K Fisheries and the Kinghorn family. I think about the Thomas family. I think about the Harris family. I think about the situation that we just had with Miss Worthen. All of those things don't go unnoticed. I may not physically be here, but I'm always watching, and I'm always listening, and I'm always paying attention. And I've never seen my job as being, my job being that I was the voice from Fredericton coming to the island. I've always felt like my job is to take the island voice to Fredericton. And so it was really important for me to be here tonight. Even though I've said some things that are, I've referred to some issues that are kind of heavy and, and weigh on each one of us, I also think about all the great things you guys have going on. When I think about the splash pad, I'm watching the fundraising and how excited the community seems to be. I look and I see what's the potential with the market of where that's going to go, and I can't wait to come back and see that project literally on the ground. I think about the Swallow Tail. You know, it was amazing being part of that fundraiser and the excitement. I heard from people all across the province about Swallow Tail, and I'm just so incredibly proud of how this community pulls together. I think about the runway, the expansion project that we have, and, and the festival. You know, I see that advertised online, and I think it's going to be great this year. So, you know, even though we've got some, some real setbacks, like the power outage and all of these other issues that, that you have dealt with, you've got so many other great, exciting things going on. I just wanted to show up to say, "I'm still listening. I'm still here, available when you need something, and I hope you do reach out, and I appreciate those people from the island who do reach out and just give me the heads up of different things that have happened and keep me informed. It's very meaningful to me." But even though I'm not here, I'm still paying attention, and I'm here always to be your voice, so thank you very much for having me, and appreciate so much all the hard work that you do. Was what I, the other thing that I learned after I got elected, I thought I was going to go into office, and I was going to make all the change and all the difference, and I was going to get great things done. And what I quickly realized is, you folks here, you're the ones who get things done. We can come alongside, and we can support as the province, but the real workers are the people who are here in this room, and thank you very much, each one of you, for all that you do.
Thank you. I think I speak for all of us when I say that we appreciate the support that we have received from you over the last, how long have we been here? Two years? It, it hasn't gone unnoticed either, the support we do have from your office, so we appreciate that. So we have no correspondence, so we'll move on to fourteen one, which is under new business, Graham and Anne Community School, the 2023 scholarships. Basically, we need a committee to look at the applications. I think we had a committee last year. I can't remember who was on it, but would those people be interested in serving again and identifying who you were? Who are you pointing at? So our scholarship committee is Counselor Greenlaw, Counselor Boyd, and Counselor Layton?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
Good answer. Okay. All right, moving on to fourteen two, which is the golf course, the new lease, C.A.O. Rayner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So it is time for the lease renewal. Last year was a trial. It was a one-year basis. And with an option to renew, everything seemed to go extremely well. It went exactly the way they said it would. It didn't cost the village anything. They paid for everything. At the end of the year, we had the presentation. I believe Mike Park came in and requested that maybe the village look at covering the lease cost. We did put that in our budget for 2023. So here we are in May, but the lease is supposed to have been started. I think that some work has been, has been done down there. So I reached out to the solicitor, got him to, basically all he did was change the date from May first, 2022, to October thirty-first, 2022, to go from May first, 2023, till October thirty-first, 2028. It's a five-year lease, same rules, same terms, ten thousand dollars per year plus HST. Speaking with the golf course committee, the five have committed to the, to the five years, which is good. I don't think this would work without them. And a little bit of help from Alyssa as far as administration. So with that, I'm looking to get permission to sign a five-year extension with the golf course.
Questions or comments? Counselor Green?
Did the rec. committee look at this application at all? I don't think.
So do we want to move ahead with this, or Counselor Boyd?
What, what's, what's the timeline, Chris? Like, do we have? Like, if we could get together, rec. committee-wise, this week, and just go over quick with the recommendation for June, or do we want to perhaps make a motion based on approval from the rec. committee, or how would you like to see this proceed? Because I, I mean, I'm, I'm all for it personally. I think, I think it's great. And it's, it's really outstanding what the committee and, and the workers did there last year. I mean, the course looks amazing. It already looks amazing this year, and it's, I think, it's, it's been very well-used, and you have people lining up first weekend it was open, so I'm all for it. I just, just some crossing the Ts and dotting the Is type things.
Well, the season has started, and currently, they're down there basically with no insurance, because our insurance, that wouldn't take place until we actually signed the lease.
Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons, and then Counselor Turner?
I'd make a motion to sign the lease for the golf course. Do it now, can do it with? Proceed from there.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Boyd. Question? Counselor Turner had a question before the motion, but...
It's more of a comment. If we've already allocated funds for this year, then the remaining years would just be a repetition of that. So we have notched this into the budget already, so I, I don't think it's as, I don't think there's as much, you know, that needs to be covered if that's already the case.
Any other questions? I have one, which I don't think is protocol, but can I ask it anyway? If the golf course committee dissolves, like, in year three, are we committed to the last two years of the agreement? Like, paying the ten thousand a year?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Counselor Greenlaw?
If that did happen, and there was a dissolving of that committee, would the rec. committee take over?
Yes. Basically, the golf course staff is, is on our payroll for the, for the, from May first till October thirty-first. So we would just continue that with the supervision from the rec. department instead of the supervision from the, the golf course committee.
Any other questions or comments?
But they have made a commitment for the five years.
Yeah, verbal.
Counselor Brown?
So we're paying for the lease, and do we pay for the upkeep of the Greens as well?
Just the lease. Everything else comes in through memberships.
Anything else? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Fourteen three is age-friendly communities. We had a presentation last month, I think, about the possibility of being designated as an age-friendly community. Basically, they would come and do an assessment of the island, make recommendations on things we could do to become more age-friendly. It's something that we would need a motion from council for. It doesn't mean that we would have to do the things that are recommended, but it does give us a little bit of a... I, I think it would provide recommendations on things we could do and give us sort of a path forward. I think most of us were actually there for the meeting, so basically, if there is interest in proceeding with that, I'm looking for a motion to proceed. You heard the motion from Counselor Greenlaw. Do we have a seconder?
I will second.
Seconded by Counselor Toll. Question? Counselor Green?
Is there a cost associated with the, their work?
I don't believe so, no. Anything else? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Fourteen four is meeting presentations, a form request. That was, there's a form in your package. It's a delegation request form from Eastern Charlotte I found on their website. I really like the format for it, as we sometimes have people who want to come and address the meeting. It gives us a little bit of an overview of what they would like to talk about, so it gives us some background just before they show up on the agenda. I wondered about, obviously, modifying it for us, but following a similar type of form just in the future if we have anybody who wants to come and address council as a whole. Questions or comments? Counselor Boyd?
I think it's a great idea. You know, it's not oftentimes that people pop in with an emergency, but there is the, we still always have that ten-minute open session if somebody needs to come and, and have something over in that time. I think this is a great idea. I think it, it helps us better prepare when we see it on the agenda, and this would be in our agenda package, so I, I'm, I'm all for it.
Anyone else? Do we need a motion to proceed with this?
I will make that motion to proceed with this.
You heard the motion from Counselor Toll. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Question? Counselor Layton, is that just a? Okay. All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Bylaw enforcement officer, resolution from Counselor, C.A.O. Rayner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we, we have the Service Commission on Retainer, I guess, on a, on a per-use basis to provide bylaw enforcement for the dangerous and unsightly premises. But before we can do that, we have to make the formal resolution from council to appoint them. So I received the, the resolution from Alex at the planning office, and I passed that on to Counselor Greenlaw to read.
Thank you. All right. Everyone knows I love reading these things. Okay, so whereas the Village of Graham and Anne has contracted with the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission to obtain professional bylaw enforcement services for dangerous or unsightly premises, be it resolved that Keith Vernon Faulkner and Sherman Ralph Ross are bylaw enforcement officers for the Village of Graham and Anne. Be it further resolved that Keith Vernon Faulkner and Sherman Ralph Ross shall remain bylaw enforcement officers for the Village of Graham and Anne so long as they continue to be in the employment of the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission. And be it further resolved that Keith Vernon Faulkner and Sherman Ralph Ross shall remain bylaw enforcement officers for the Village of Graham and Anne so long as the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission remains contracted to provide bylaw enforcement services to the Village of Graham and Anne.
You heard the motion from Counselor Greenlaw. Do we have a seconder? Very excited on the side of the table. Counselor Green seconded. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Fourteen six is the Northhead Ball Field. C.A.O. Rayner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As most of you have seen or heard, there's been a very committed group of softball, mainly softball players that have completely transformed the Northhead Ball Field back to probably even better than its original state. I thought I was going to have Silas come in and, and talk, but he may have talked himself out, or I may have talked him out of it, but we just really wanted to thank everyone that has spent the last four, five, six weeks up there. You know, anything they needed, we've, we've provided them, but you can't put a, a price on the amount of volunteer and the, and the time that they've put there. And I hate to do this, because I, because you're, always afraid you're going to leave someone out, but, I mean, talking with Silas, Cody Small has been the one that has been there day in and day out since this whole thing started. Silas is, is a big part of this, you know. Vern Patton's been up there with some equipment, Mitchell Ingersoll. And like I said, I hate to name names because there's always someone else that's been there, and I know there's been more people there, but... So in exchange for all of their hard work, the, the group had come in and said, "Do you think we could name the ball field?" And I said, "I don't know. I don't know if there's a procedure that we have or not, but, you know, by all means, you know, give us, give us what you think, and we'll take that to, to council." So, anyway, so they have put a request in to be able to name the Northhead Ball Field. I won't give out the name on camera, just in case it's supposed to be a bit of a surprise, but that's pretty, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Questions or comments? I think just for anybody watching, we have floated the name to council, so we do know what it is, and it's, it has been un, I'm trying to think of the, informally approved, I guess maybe is the best way to say it. So questions or comments? We probably should. Go ahead, Counselor Green.
I would move that we authorize the naming of the Northhead Ballpark to the approved name.
You heard the motion from Counselor Green. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. I drove by the Northhead Ball Diamond last week, and I have to say, it is impressive up there. Like, I did not realize how much work had gone in, but it is really impressive what they have done, so thanks to everybody who was involved with that. Fourteen seven is food trucks, vendor permit, C.A.O. Rayner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We should stagger these. It should be like, me, you, me, you. So we had an email from one of the food trucks that was here last year requesting to come back. And on our new website, if any of you have been on there, there is an actual spot on there for permits where you can go in and fill out like a special request permit, whether it's for food trucks, or festivals, or if you wanted to parade and needed to close a certain section of the road. So, but one of the questions that came up from last year's food trucks, other than the fact that they were a huge success, was there was a, there was a couple concerns about the fact that they were coming here and using the facility for free of charge. So I guess at this point, we just need to come up with a nominal fee for, if this is what the group wants, or maybe we don't. But moving forward to fill out the permit, just to have record of, of who's here and when, and whether or not they need power, and whether or not we should charge a minimal fee for the use. or not we should charge a minimal fee for the use of the facility for the day or for the weekend.
Questions or comments? Counselor Toll?
Do we charge for the permits? How much do we charge for that?
We don't.
We don't?
No.
Thank you.
So last year, there was an issue with hooking up power and all that other stuff. And the trucks were on it, running off our power all week pretty well, weren't they?
The first one that were here required a bit more...the Bangkok one required more power than the Sirius Smoke one did.
Right.
He just basically needed our regular, just 110. But thanks to a grant to the arts and culture, we were able to provide the electrical requirements that we needed. So it didn't really...didn't cost us anything. Other than just the usage.
Have you reached out to any other communities and how they handle it? I really don't know. Like, is it a pretty common thing if you're in the city of St. John, the city of Fredericton, or Eastern Charlotte? Any of these places, did they charge when a food truck rolls in? Or is there just like a, hey, it's a hundred fifty bucks to set up in town, or...
They do. Most of them have like a peddler's license for vendors to set up. But the hard part is, is this guy wants to probably come once. But if you go to St. John and get a peddler's license, you can go take your food truck and set it up for the year, you know, every weekend. So it's to come up with that one-off fee for the day or for the weekend. It's not gonna be long-term. It's just gonna be just a short-term event.
Counselor Turner?
The communities that I spoke with charge like between ten and twenty dollars a day.
Does that cover the power bill?
No idea what a kilowatt power goes for and how much. It's...the Bangkok one hasn't requested to come back yet. It's, I believe it was Sirius Smoke. And like I said, they just required 110, just for their fridge. Everything else was propane. So theirs would be minimal.
Counselor Turner?
Bangkok has requested, just haven't come to you yet.
Perfect. They were both a huge success.
So do we...
Maybe we should, I mean, you know, just if they are gonna take a lot of power, just have it a floating rate sort of type of deal. Like, if you're just gonna use a 110, you're just nominal fee, something smaller. But if you're gonna take a lot of power, maybe just up it to cover the cost as well.
And most of these guys have the capabilities to run off their own generators. So if we were said we're gonna charge them fifty dollars for the use of our, you know, our forty or fifty amp breakers, they might just say, "Well, that's fine. We can just run it off our generator for the day." So it's more or less just a fee to park here at the facility and...because, I mean, everyone else, all the other businesses on Graham and Anne pay property taxes and...
Counselor Turner and then Counselor Greenlaw? Or vice versa?
I think that maybe if we had like just the fee, as the C.A.O. mentioned, that, you know, just for being here, parking here kind of thing, that if there is a need for power, then that would be negotiated, you know, based on maybe our history last year, whatever. But just to get this kind of moving, because most of them need to know now because they're booking for the summer. So if we could just sort of solidify that fee.
Counselor Greenlaw?
I'm agreeing with Jane. I...our Counselor, Counselor Turner. I think having the fee also helps to pay for the maintenance of the outlets, should they degrade over time, that sort of thing. So it's good to have some sort of small fee for it.
So what do we want to put for a number? Counselor Boyd?
Can I suggest a twenty-five dollar day fee with a scale to be produced by staff for power? Kind of like, kind of like when you go in the hall up. There's your hall-up fee, and then if you use 110 or use more power, the pressure washer or whatever, your fees go up. So something like a twenty-five dollar a day and then a fee schedule for power usage. Is that...
With some...Counselor Green?
Seems to me last year, we had some discussion after they left here, and then they were gonna come back later in the summer. And we had suggested a fee that was unacceptable to them, and they didn't come back. So I think the twenty-five dollars plus a top-up for power usage is reasonable.
So would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that the village of Graham and Anne charge vendors a twenty-five dollar daily fee with a top-up for power usage to be determined by staff on a kind of a 110 to whatever scale.
You heard the motion from Counselor Boyd. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Question? What is the...okay.
Are we gonna charge the summer market? Because the motion says vendors.
Didn't we used to charge the vendors, like five dollars a table or wasn't...
When the Boys and Girls Club operated the gym, it was a fundraiser for them. They charged a five-dollar, two-dollar per head entrance fee to the market, and they also sold tables to the vendors. So that was the way that they used to do it, to raise money to run the club operations. But when the village took over, we didn't.
Do we still have to pay to have it cleaned after they leave?
Have her clean it.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I don't forget where we are. So we have a motion on the floor, and we have questions on that motion. Do we have any more comments? Counselor Layton, Counselor Turner?
Well, I think the fee's quite insignificant, really. I mean, this is a community property. It brings people in. I mean, if a vendor wants to come in, set up here a few days, I don't even see the issue with plugging into the building and using our electricity. This is why we have this place. So if we're gonna do it to one vendor, I think we're probably gonna have to continue and do it with anybody that wants to come on our property. So we just move ahead and welcome people into our community. And if they want to plug into the side of the building, let's let them do it. It's my opinion.
Counselor Turner?
For the market, what if we had the twenty-five dollar fee for the market as a whole? So it's the use of the property as opposed to the individuals involved. And then it's much more feasible, but it's really the same use of space.
Counselor Brown?
Are they using electricity?
Yeah, some of them have, like Dalton has his chili, so he'd have a warmer on. Yep.
Okay, so now we've opened a big can of worms. Counselor Green?
See, I was sort of under the assumption that we rented the gym, whether it be for pickleball, basketball, volleyball, that we had a fee that we charged for that space for the allotted time. That I just sort of assumed that the markets were falling under that umbrella.
Counselor Turner?
Considering that they're only, what, a maximum of four hours, I think the twenty-five dollar fee is sensible. They're not booking it for a day, and we're charging like the outside use by the day for twenty-five dollars. So I think it's fair.
Counselor Boyd?
Is the hourly gym rate forty dollars, twenty dollars?
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Are we okay with the question? Counselor Boyd?
Can I amend the motion on the fly? Is that procedural? Okay, so amend the motion to say food trucks, twenty-five dollars a day with a scale for power usage. And then perhaps we look at the market at different times. Don't lump them both in together in this motion? Motion?
Who seconded the motion? Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons, are you okay with those changes?
Yes.
Everybody understands the modified motion? Although, any question on that? All those in favor?
No.
Oh, sorry. Contrary minded?
I was just gonna say, we could include the market for their outside term, like they're gonna be set up out here. So could we have like all the outdoor vendors at twenty-five dollars and the ones in the gym at the gym rate? If there's ten people there, not all of them. Yeah. Yeah. So as opposed to market and food trucks, it would be outdoor vendors and those who use the gym space.
That's something we can look at.
Yep. Okay, so I think we said...did we get to the contrary minded? Yeah.
You were just getting there.
Contrary minded? One opposed. And we will take the conversation...so the motion passed. We'll take the conversation around the market, maybe finance and property. We're sent to be sending a lot of things there lately. And maybe come back with a recommendation in June before the market season starts, so we're not springing it on them partway through. Is that fair? Okay. All right. Fourteen eight is U.M.N.B. Zone Four. Update, Counselor Boyd.
All right, seeing as how we're only about halfway through the agenda, we'll be pretty brief. Just a couple of U.M.N.B. in general updates for the first time since our mandate in 2021. We now have a full board and a full executive. So that means there's two zone representatives for all nine of the zones, plus the cities. And we have a full executive, which is president, vice president, second VP, which is me, past president, a treasurer, and yeah, treasurer, secretary.
And a treasurer.
We also have a second zone rep now here in Zone Four. As most of you know, Brenda Allison, our previous...my previous cohort was not elected in this last election. So now we have Wade Greenlaw, who is a first-term counselor with St. Stephen. Wade is a pretty excitable guy. He's very committed to the cause. He just retired from Point La Pro and brings a lot of leadership experience from a career in the U.S. Navy. And also, he sat on the LSD board for a lot of years. So he's pretty into the role, and he's gonna be a good guy to work with in our zone and around the table in general. Most of you probably got my U.M.N.B. update. I sent it to Bonnie. She distributed it out. We had a Zone Four meeting in March. It was quite well-attended. We were in St. Andrews. And it's just, it's a lot of the same things around the province that are happening, same in Zone Four, which the big one being amalgamation issues. Fortunately, we have not had to deal with a whole lot of that. But one thing we do deal with is the RSC. And sometimes, now that the RSC has been downloaded, more responsibilities from the province. It's easy for them to kind of make it seem like they are telling us what to do. But one thing that Minister Atlanta has said again and again is that the RSCs work for the municipalities that they're involved in. So we are lucky in Zone Four to have very strong voices on the board, our mayor being one of them. And all the mayors in Zone Four are, I think, very vocal and really want what's best for our zone and RSC Ten. That's what we are. Yep. Anyways, things are going well. Keep the updates. Now that we have full board, the committees are striking. So there's lots of stuff on the go. So that's all the news from U.M.N.B.
Thank you, Counselor Boyd. Any questions? Okay. Fourteen nine is N.B. Power. And we are getting late in the evening, so I'll try to be relatively quick. Everybody knows the power was out for twenty-three and a half hours over the weekend. One of the things that became clear over that time is that our backup generator is out of service down in Ingles Head. I had a call this morning, again with N.B. Power. I think just to back up a little bit, we have, it's a government relations contacted N.B. Power, who I talk to every time the power goes out. And basically, that's his job, is to provide updates on what's happening. So it was the mayor of Campaballo, Harvey Matthews, myself, and Bob Scott on the call. He has found out that there was a...when they were testing the generator, there was an issue with it that they determined. They had to have a tech come from Texas. They are running tests on it tomorrow and Wednesday. So based on what happens, what Mayor Matthews and I had talked about doing is potentially writing a letter to the president of N.B. Power emphasizing the need to have a backup generator available for the islands in particular. I think we saw Sunday with the amount of people who needed gas after the power outage. It's not like if you're on the mainland and you can drive to a community that does have power if you need to refuel your generator or your car, so you can charge your devices, any of those things. The backup generators that were here the summer of 2019, I think it was, when they ran the cable, those have been moved off island. We talked about maybe that being a potential backup. But all that to say, I don't have a draft letter. I just didn't have time to get to it today. But I'd like a little bit of flexibility to tailor it based on what happens with the test tomorrow and Wednesday. If the test goes well and they can fix it right away, it then becomes we need a plan for next time. If it becomes apparent that it's going to take longer to fix, then I think the letter has to take more of the tone of, "We need a backup now." So if there is support for doing that, I didn't obviously want to write a letter to N.B. Power just on my own, on a wing and a prayer. But I felt like something that there would be support for around the table. So if you guys are comfortable with having that flexibility, then that would be what I would suggest would be the approach. Any questions or comments on what happened over the weekend or what our next steps should be? Counselor Boyd?
Was there...was there any timeline laid out to how long they've known about the issue with the jet?
We have not determined when the test took place that they were not...when they determined that they needed to have the tech come. No. Mr. Scott is still looking for answers for us. So he...basically, we ask him a question. He goes into N.B. Power to find the response and then comes back to us. So he's trying to source all of this information. So that's the other reason why I thought it was better to give us a couple of days. He has said he'll be back Wednesday, hopefully with some more info at that point. Counselor Turner?
Would it be possible to have some of the notifications on Voyant? I'm thinking particularly the warming center. I didn't see that. And I mean, I didn't need it, but it is something that would be nice to have it on a push program, especially with people's phones and all running out of power.
I...we are undertaking an exercise with New Brunswick EMO to update our emergency plan. And I think that's one of the things that we need to identify in that for sure. Counselor Boyd?
I guess I'll leave it to see what comes from you and Mayor Matthews' conversations. But I certainly think it's unacceptable for N.B. Power to, no pun intended, leave us in the dark when there's issues with what is essentially our lifeline, when there's a break between here and the mainland. So it's...to know something and not let anybody know is unacceptable.
That was one of the other things we had identified, is a notification. It's one thing if it's down for 24 hours, but if it's gonna be an extended outage like this was, then there needs to be a heads-up and a plan. So...
It dodged the bullet. It was warm weather and...
Yeah. Absolutely. Okay, so...
All the more reason in our EMO plan that we need to change the location of the warming center from the fire hall to the community center. Not that the fire hall isn't doing a great job, but in the event of a real emergency, that's no place to have public at the fire hall. And room's an issue. So it makes sense to bring that over here. But in order to do that, we need to have backup power here for this facility.
Okay, so I'm hearing support for proceeding with the letter. I will circulate it before we send it, but we'll just proceed along with that. Okay? Okay? 14-10 is application for donation from the Car Club, and I believe the Treasurer is going to address that.
From the Graham and Ann Car Club, Dana Greenlaw sending this application for us. They're looking for funds to go to the race in the Mary machine, the 19th, the 21st of May, for fuel, hotels, transportation. They're asking for 500. We can only give them, what, two? So just your guys' discussion on that.
Counselor Toll?
Have they tried asking any of the businesses on the island? I know we used to support them completely.
Yeah, they have raised $2,000 and they need 3,500.
Oh, they didn't come to my place.
They're not done, they say. They're still, they're still contacting businesses, so maybe you'll get a call.
Okay, yeah, because I mean, yeah, because we used to support them and all that, so yeah. Just wondered.
Yeah, for sure.
Counselor Green?
I'd move that we give the Car Club our allotment of $200 for a donation for their trip to Mary machine.
You heard the motion from Counselor Green. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Toll. Question? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. 15-1 is committee reports. Transportation Committee, Counselor Layton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, fellow councilors. Our esteemed member of the legislature is here as well. Welcome her. I wanted to discuss our airport beginning. I don't know what's going on here, but I'm getting some looks. Airport resurfacing will resume on the 17th of this month and will continue toward the protection, through the projected date of completion of July the 30th. We handle, or we participate in weekly updates with the Brunswick Engineering, Northern Construction, and the Village Graham and Ann. So every week, we have a sit-down meeting, discuss what's going on for that week, for next week. So we're very aware of what's going on out there at all times. There will be an emergency protocol in place when, as they're going through the construction phase, there's a bit of a protocol where if a, if a plane needs to land, they have 30 minutes to get their equipment off. There's a certain protocol and checks in place for that, right? But there's definitely going to be times when the airport will not be accessible, so I think we'll be reaching out to give JRC the heads up in those different situations. It's not, it's not the best thing, but it's going to proceed, or end up into a better facility for our safety. So on to coastal transport. Is there any questions about the airport at all? Chris, want to add anything to that? You're good.
Yep, no one, good.
Good, okay. Well, coastal transport, as everybody knows, we've, we've lobbied the government aggressively over the last couple of years, and we've had some movement. As Andrea broke the news or late earlier, that we're getting our three-week extension. It's absolutely not when, what we really wanted, but I mean, we're going to take it and we're going to roll with it. The, this Graham and Ann Five will start on June the 19th and end service on September the 17th. What we had to do is we had, we got three weeks. The last two weeks of the schedule was going to interfere with the refat for the adventure leaving, so we were going to lose that extra week. So we brought it up to the front of the schedule, and that's our three weeks. But going forward, we're looking at negotiating right now to maybe switch the refit around so the venture, or the ship leaves in the spring, and then it's ready for our busiest season, which is October, November. So, so we'll see where that goes. Where else are we here? Sorry. Okay, one last note that they shared with us at our ferry partnership committee, and that the first official document has been filed by the province that starts the long process of replacing the Graham and Ann Five. So actually, they've got something on the books. There's a piece of paper filed somewhere, so the process has begun. If it's going to mimic our last ferry, it was 10 years, I guess, since that piece of paper was filed, so I don't know if we can slim that up to eight years or not, Andrea, but six years, I don't know. But it's, it's nice to see that that process has started. As far as the roads, we had a lot going on with that. We've aggressively lobbied the province for a significant advancement in our island's infrastructure. Some of those results are being seen now. The province just announced a asset management study, which is, which is actually being, taking place right now as we speak. That's going to look at every culvert, every guardrail, every, the surface of the road, the ditch, the slopes, everything, the bridges, box culverts, and put it on a piece of paper, put a recommendation with each item. And that gives the province the, the ability to exactly assess the situation, have some, you know, a better understanding of a cost, what it's going to cost, I guess, to, to resurface our roads. So that's good. That's good news. Lastly, I guess a tender will be issued by the province soon for the, continuing the brush cutting from the end of Seal Cove to the lighthouse. That was, we flagged that in our, previously in our contract, but that was a mistake, I guess. It's the province's responsibility to do that work, and they're going to carry that work out. And as well, last time the minister visited the island, we had him around, we showed him a lot of different issues. And Bonnie Brook was one of the issues that we spoke of. I know he was under the culvert. I don't know if you crawled down there or not, but, but I mean, he was there and he realized the issue of it. I mean, it's a significant part of our infrastructure, and if it failed, it cuts off our power plant that doesn't work. The ferry, the, you know, our very lively fishing community. So that is, I believe, in the design stage now, so hopefully we'll have movement and maybe it be completed this year. So lastly, I didn't know Andrea was going to be here, but I just want to shout out to Andrea because, I mean, I've been a hard critic of hers, but I mean, she's really shown her worth here to me as far as our committee. Captain Paul McDonald, Minister Jeff Carr, and also as well as our contact with DTI, Alan Kerr. All those four people are tremendous value to the Village of Graham and Ann, and we have a great relationship with them all, and we'll continue down this road. And I guess that's all I got to say. Thank you, Andrea.
Any questions for Counselor Layton?
Thank you.
All right, moving on to 15-2, Arts and Culture Report, Counselor Brown?
You're a hard act to follow, Jordy. Madam Mayor and councilors, I just wanted to do a little update of what's going on as we're heading towards year two of Island Fest. We're looking for some new as well as returns from last year. We kind of feel that more children's events should be part of the festival this year, but last year was new and anyway, hopefully it'll all come together. We've partnered with Rotary to bring a circus troupe to the island. We've also partnered with the museum to have a musical event. Last but not least, Tourism, we got together with Tourism last week, and they formed a committee for Island Fest, so we got a group of people that are going to work together for it, and I'm looking forward to it. If anyone has any ideas or would like to put on, you know, to put on our events calendar, you can get in touch with the village or me. And yeah, that's all. And if there's any questions that I may or may not be able to answer, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Any questions? I will say I participated in the One Children's event last year. The Let's Throw Water Balloons was very popular up in the Castellaball Diamond.
Glad you enjoyed it.
Oh, yeah. I'm not sure I enjoyed it as much as others did, who were throwing the balls for the water balloons, but. All right, we will move on then to 17-1, which is approval to pay invoices from the General Operating Fund. Island Home Hardware, the March statement is $2,117.14. Island Waste and Recycling for the transfer station boxes, $2,875. Universal Truck and Trailer for the trailer repairs, $7,341.63. You heard the motion from Counselor Toll. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Question? Counselor Green?
The trailer repairs, that isn't the one we've just did all the work on recently, was it? More of the same or something different?
It was damaged at the landfill. By the landfill, but the landfill has a big sign at the landfill that says, "We're not responsible for..." So it was a, it was a trio of the landfill and Cooks, because we were, they were using our trailer to haul fee bags to try to get some of that mess cleaned up, up, back. So we went back and forth with everyone at, and at the end of the day, everyone agreed to take a little bit of ownership. So this, so we're paying the bill and then their Cooks and...
Are paying a third. Cooks is paying a third, we're paying a third, and Southwest is paying a third.
Everyone's going to pay a third.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. 17-2 is from the General Capital Fund to Island Waste and Recycling for the Transfer Station Forklift, $18,975.
I'd make a motion to pay this, the General Capital Fund?
You heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Question? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. 18 is Transfer Funds. 18-1, to transfer $20,514 from the General Capital Fund to the General Operating Fund?
Sure. I wish we transferred $20,514 from the General Capital Fund to the General Operating Fund.
You heard the motion from Counselor Green. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Boyd. Question? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. Second one is to transfer $17,207.10 from the Capital Reserve Fund to the General Capital
Make a motion to transfer the $17,207.10 from the Capital Reserve Fund to the General Capital Fund?
You heard the motion for Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Turner. Question? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. 19 is Closed Session. We have several items, financial, the trash barrel tender, the mowing tender, transfer station tenders, personnel, recreation programmer, and staff salaries. Do we have a motion to go to closed session? Heard the motion from Counselor Toll. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Boyd. All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. I'll recall this regular council meeting back to order. We were in closed session to discuss financial and personnel issues. The first item was the trash barrel tender. And I'm looking for a motion to accept the tender.
Make a motion to accept the tender?
Heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Question? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. 19-2, you've declared conflict. Do you want to step out while we vote? All right. So the mowing tender?
I'd make a motion to accept the mowing tender that was put in for both cemeteries.
You heard the motion from Counselor Boyd. Do we have a seconder?
I will second that.
Seconded by Counselor Toll. Question? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. Wait for Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons to come back, and I guess we don't have to rush because we get 20 minutes tonight. It's not like the night we had five. Okay. 19-3, I see Counselor Toll working on her motion, so I'm going to talk slowly.
Okay, I make a motion to decline the bids for the transfer station.
You heard the motion from Counselor Toll. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Turner. Question? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. 19-4 is Personnel, Recreation, Programmer.
Personnel, the Recreation Programmer, that's Caleb's probationary period has come up and it's a recommendation to make him a permanent full-time employee in that position.
Is that a motion?
Yes, sorry. I didn't word it that way, did I?
You heard the motion from Counselor Green. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Boyd. Question? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. 19-5 is also personnel.
Okay, it's, I move that we accept the, the staff salary review, review Phase One, I guess we'll call it. We've got a little bit more, bit more work to do on some of it, as presented to you earlier.
You heard the motion from Counselor Green. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Toll. Question? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. Our next regular council meeting will be June 5th here at the community center at 7:30 PM.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn for Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Thank you, everybody, and good night.